I make the motion that we begin this evening's hearing process.
Yep, second.
We can just open the meeting.
Open the meeting.
So Tommy, it is looking for the time.
You want the time?
Six oh nine.
Six oh nine. Six oh nine, yep. Um, did you want to start off?
Uh, I guess I can start off.
Yeah.
But I, I, the way that I would normally find out is that we get them both, the hearing in session, we call them, it's a matter of up for advisement or under consideration. And then people will be sworn. I'm here, I'm Michael Gawn, I'm the attorney for the town of Bakersfield. And my job is to give legal advice to the board. I did respond to an email that Mrs. Flanagan had sent to you Heather.
Yep.
And um, so I'm ready to start in any way you want me to, but typically the person who's the applicant would be going first. And I would respond to that. Now, I have been in contact with, with Heather. And whether she shared my emails with the, with the three board members and John, I assume you're a board member?
Yes.
Okay, I know what your last name.
West is in the direction.
Okay.
It's a difficult one.
And so, um, I, I certainly can repeat that information for the public. But the conversations, the communications between myself and the board are really up for the board to decide whether those conversations are things that you would like to uh, include the public in, I'm giving you legal advice, I'm not presenting, presenting testimony personally.
Alright.
So if I could, let's start with the basic part to start with. First off, you may notice one of the people have changed. Mara Horn, who was on the original ZBA hearing, has stepped down, uh, regrettably. And fortunately for us, Nikki Krip has said that she can fill in and, and make that third piece in a temporary capacity. The select board has accepted her as a, as a temporary ZBA member as much as myself. Nikki sits on the select board as well as the planning commission. And in case you don't know, I sit on the select board as well for the town.
And I did review the, I wasn't able to attend the last hearing, but I did look at the video afterwards and look at the minutes, so I'm kind of up to speed, I think, with what's happened so far.
And as I just mentioned, that by, by virtue of having reviewed.
You may want to turn on your mic, push the push button.
Alright, just. Um, I would like to, because I mentioned that normally a new zoning board member or a zoning board member who had not been present at the evidentiary hearing uh, would be ineligible to participate in the hearing. Uh, when that member actually does review the tape or the videotape, you then have sufficient basis on which you can participate in the decision making.
Okay.
And, and you stated you did review it.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, so then I think the second order of business is to go into and just describe, uh, Taylor and Morgan Flanagan, correct? How they're making a request for variance on, uh, the bylaws uh, with regards to zoning bylaws specifically regarding five point seven, which is a height variance or a height restriction of thirty-five feet. They came before us a little over a month ago requesting the variance uh, in the initial hearing. We did hear what they had to say. Uh, we had some conversation, we said that we, we had some thoughts, but we couldn't move forward until we can confirm that what we wanted to do or that we were suggesting to do was within the purview of what we can do as the ZBA and such. Uh, the second hearing is in place so that we can go over, uh, any, any additional information we're requesting, as well as with the, now that Michael's with us for a little legal guidance so that we can follow what is in not only our bylaws, but also the state guidelines and their bylaws. Uh, but principally, I, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I think, I, I know the state is a higher level of government. Uh, does our bylaws take the precedence in this case?
Um, the state, uh, regulations set the floor and the ceiling. So between the floor and the ceiling, you can, uh, it's up to the town to figure it out. Uh, I would have a tendency to say as a general rule is that it's the more restrictive that applies. And so the state law says that you have to, that you have to do this, you have to do it even though your bylaws may say otherwise. And, and by the same token, your bylaws may say, oh, you can do all this, but the state bylaws say, no, you can't. So somewhere between those two.
That's a real great.
Two extremes, what you can do.
Sharing files on a computer, most restricted takes precedence. Uh, most restricted access. Perfect. This is primarily for you two, so please sit at the table. Uh, make sure you turn the mic on by pushing the push button, it turns a bright green versus the green is. So if you don't mind, please state your name for the record, let's start off with that, your address and what you're looking to, to.
Uh, they need to be sworn in too.
Okay, as well swearing in, but should we start with the name and the address first? Just start with the name and the address.
I'm Taylor Flanagan, I live at, uh, thirty-one twenty East Bakersfield Road. Morgan Flanagan, I live at the same address.
And who's, uh, Michael, can you swear them in?
Sure, uh, just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Yes. Is there anybody else that's going to be testifying this evening? See that.
Possibly Brian is our.
Three people in the, here in the room, and I see that there's somebody on the iPad, so if those are people that are interested persons, they probably should identify themselves by their name, address, and uh, what their, uh, capacity may be, whether joining neighbor or.
So Brian Westcombe, I think you should probably sit up at the other mic at the table.
Have to sit on the, whatever.
Well, we'll move the chair. You can, I'll bring the chair up there. We need you on the mic though, is what I'm saying if needed. I'm sorry, Brian, Brian's got to move, so. Let me just, no, let me assist you.
What do you need?
Just remove the chair, he's going to bring it up so he can use this mic.
Okay. Thank you. You want to get in trouble there?
My God. Poor Brian.
What's that? What are you doing? Oh, I want, well, actually. Just don't laugh, just be, ain't that for the last name? I don't, I don't, terrified to meet you, I guess.
Thank you, Morgan.
But while Brian sets himself up and gets on the mic, Brian is our, our zoning administrator.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
And then we have.
Sorry, thank you also, select me, the law director. I'm, I'm very select.
Former select man, but was on the road crew, is on the road crew, I shouldn't say once.
Hopefully still there.
You. But you might, don't mind turning on the mic first and just state your name and, uh, your position, address.
Brian Westcombe, zoning administrator, county of Bakersfield. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. I do. Anybody else that's planning to do?
Not sure. These, uh, you get your fire department back there, so I'm not sure if they're going. Just Q and A, okay.
Well, you do have questions, you have answers, then they, they, they will need to be under oath at that point in time. You don't need to be sworn at this point, at a point in time that you want to give evidence, you will need to, uh, participate. And as a person asking questions, you are an interested party because you are, uh, a member of the fire department. The fire department certainly may have a position on whether the protective permit should be granted. So if you do ask questions, well, uh, we won't need to have you sworn in, but we'll need to have you identified more formally. Okay.
And then Linda, on your iPad?
Yes.
Are you planning to ask any questions or give any evidence, answers?
I wasn't actually, I was just actually interested in hearing. I, I'm an interested neighbor, uh, there in view of our house and wanted to hear the outcome of what's happening.
Okay, so a, as Michael had said, if at any point you have questions or, uh, you have questions and/or you want to supply an answer, you're going to have to swear and under oath.
Probably should swear her, and if she's an interest, she's a neighbor, yeah.
I, I would like to bring to Linda's attention that in order to participate further in this proceeding, if you don't ask any questions and don't give any evidence, you will not be allowed to go to the environmental court and represent a position in court. So in order to maintain your prior, your interested person's status, you need to participate one degree, some meaningful degree, asking questions, giving evidence, stating a position.
Would just hear about it. Uh, Mike, I'm just really here to watch.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Now that everyone's sworn in, I think we can begin.
Would you like me to start with the, um, that uh, Heather received an email from Taylor? And I responded to that email. Not as, this, uh, basically, I hope that you understand that, that when the ZBA is holding a hearing, it's acting essentially as if it were a judge. And just like judges don't talk with people ex parte, meaning outside the presence of the hearing or, uh, with the communication being shared with everybody, is that a judge can't contact you and say, yeah, I want to hear what you have to say. So you, you have to do it in a formal manner. Uh, and I understand that this is a small community and sometimes it's hard to maintain things and, uh, the formality. So it's, but I'm just saying that that's, uh, the way that it's supposed to be run. So I, uh, did send an email off to uh, Mr. and Mrs. Flanagan on January fourth, Saturday, so I came into the office, I can be early to send this out to you. So I'll just read that into the record, then I'll give the email to, to be included as part of the record, if you will.
Okay.
So it says, good morning, Mr. and Mrs. Flanagan. On December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, you sent an email to Heather Jewett, a member of the Bakersfield zoning board adjustment, in which you asked Ms. Jewett to put into writing the process for a zoning request. Well, Ms. Jewett would like to be able to respond to your request, the ZBA acts in a quasi-tuditional manner and communications between applicants such as yourselves and the board or its members need to be done properly. Communications need to be done, need to be made formally as part of the record. Typically, this happens in an open meeting, but sometimes communications can be made in writing as long as all interested persons are included in the communication. Furthermore, the communication should not be addressed to a single member of the ZBA, but rather to the ZBA itself. So the response from the ZBA would be a formal response of the ZBA and not the response of just one member. No one member has the authority to speak for the Z, on behalf of the ZBA. In any event, Ms. Jewett forwarded your email to me, and so I will attempt to give you a response, but please note that I record that from ZBA and not you, you cannot rely upon me to give you advice. I suggest you contact your attorney. You asked, could you put into writing the process for the variance request? On page twenty-two of the zoning bylaw, a flow chart appears. If your application was for a building permit, which should not require conditional use approval, like plan approval, PUD approval, subdivision approval, or variance approval, you could submit an application to zoning administration and he issues a permit. The zoning administrator concludes that you required a variance, you would deny the application. Due to your application, you questioned the construction of a structure which exceeds the height limitation, denial was appropriate. At that time, you needed to submit to the zoning administrator an application for conditional use approval or variance approval, or whatever other approval you believe you needed to exceed the height limitation. I understand that you submitted one application, the application states on the first page that you were applying for a variance. However, in the letter presumably submitted with the application, you also mentioned conditional use approval. In any event, I understand the meeting has been warned only for variance approval, so the hearing Monday evening will be limited only to the consideration of your request for a variance. If you want the ZBA to consider conditional use approval, another application will need to be filed and extra fee paid. You might want to request a continuance on the variance application. If you do, the ZBA can consider the variance of the same plans it considers conditional use approval. If you don't, as previously mentioned, the hearing on Monday will be limited to the consideration of the variance. The various procedures are set forth in pages twenty-seven and eight. Actually, this is out of the Bakersfield zoning bylaw. Uh, the criteria required to be met before the ZBA can brand a variance appear on page twenty-eight, you need to satisfy all five criteria. I'll be attending the hearing on Monday, perhaps you'll have an opportunity to chat. Uh, regards, Michael Westcombe.
Thank you. Thank you.
That you go to. Yeah, that you go to time.
Yeah. Need to pass that to. As well, thank you, sorry.
So that's where we are.
Um, I guess where, where we're coming from, um, I'm, I'm clear as to where we stand, um, from our last meeting. Um, I understand the variance application was denied, um, officially by Brian, um, to which point we made conditions that we agreed upon so that, so long as it was, um, it's legally authorized. Um, and so from what I understand, they are not, um, authorized. So I'm just kind of wondering where we stand at that point. Um, from our perspective, uh, we're, we're, we're applying for those variants ahead of needing a certificate of occupancy. Um, we need a certificate of occupancy from Brian to, um, close on our bank loan. Um, so we applied for this variance early. Um, in the process, uh, we are not ready for certificate of occupancy. Um, so we've applied for the variance again, just to, um, sort of admit our fault and find a solution, um, that can work for both the town and ourselves. Um, I, we, we thought the agreement when we left last meeting was reasonable and achievable. Um, so if that's something we can agree to again during this meeting, that would be great. Um, we don't want this to go any further than it needs to. Um, so yeah, we're just, um, hopefully can be agreeable to, um, use five criteria in the variance, I think we're picking up with the variance application at this point, I believe. Um, and then I don't know how the conditional use would apply at this point. Um, but we did send.
Yeah.
An application, uh, earlier today to Kathy, and Brian just received it tonight. Um, for conditional use, should we need to do that tonight?
Okay.
Okay, um, let me just correct, I don't want to say correct is the right thing, but at least I can give you my understanding of what, what the procedure should be, and what I believe that was, was that when you applied for building permit, you get a building permit and deploy, and then, and then pursuant to that building permit, you started to build a tower, then you applied for a certificate of compliance, and Brian said, I can't, no.
No, we didn't apply for a certificate yet.
So you applied for the amended building permit?
No, I applied for a variance because we are over that thirty-five limit that we.
Okay, so. So the, uh, Brian does not have the authority to grant or deny a variance. All he can do is grant or deny an application for a building permit as long, and he has to deny it uh, if it doesn't meet the criteria. So if there were sideline setbacks that you say I'm approach, you want to encroach upon these uh, within the sideline or the front, front edge back, uh, barriers or whatever, is that you'd have to come in for a variance or site plan approval or, uh, variety of different things. Um, so, um, like, you know, whether Brian denied it, really what he's doing is sending it through the ZBA or the ZBA to decide whether it's appropriate or not. And many communities that there's the zoning administrator, and then there's also the, uh, secretary to the ZBA, and there may be other, uh, people involved in a town as small as Bakersfield. You, you may have ti- trouble finding one person to do any job, much less, uh, many people to do all of the jobs. And so sometimes the zoning administrator does a little bit more than what he or she would actually like to do. He would prefer to say file something with the clerk, the clerk of, and so the clerk is Tammy at this mo- moment. And so saying that I want to file an application and that would go to her rather than to him. But without a clerk, well, sometimes people have to take on the role of being the clerk. You know, getting it to the right person.
So at this point, we have an approved building permit. Um, we are not ready for our certificate of occupancy. Um, and we applied for the variance early because we're sort of trying to amend this early.
So let me just go on to the next step is that um, there are different levels, and so that if you have a permitted use, we'll apply for permitted use. If you have a use which is conditionally permitted, that does, that, uh, Brian can, will grant building permits for a single family residence as a permitted use as long as it meets all of the requirements. He's the only one that'll do that, it doesn't go to the ZBA, I'll just like. If it's a conditional use, it's still a permitted use. It's just that it's permitted only after the zoning board of adjustment has had an opportunity to look at it and say, are there, uh, is, are there any sort of conditions which should be put onto that particular approval, which allows it to go forward? A variance is only applicable when neither permitted nor conditional use approval is there. And so typically, you would look to conditional use approval before you would go to a variance. Um, the problem we have this evening with talking to you about conditional use approval is that this hearing has been warned as a variance and it's a variance only. And, um, and therefore, people who might have participated, if they were to have received notice of conditional use approval might have shown up. My suspicion is that they probably would have shown up for a variance application. That said, I can't tell you that as a matter of law, that all interested persons would have shown up. Um, so my tendency is to say is that this evening's meeting, you know, if you want to go forward and visit variance, you can. You will have, you understand that a variance is much more difficult to obtain the conditional use approval.
No.
Okay, well, conditional use approval saying you can get it because you are in compliance with zoning if you're able to satisfy the criteria. There are problems that you have with satisfying the criteria under section uh, five point seven, is that the height limitations, uh, that. It says, no structure exceeds thirty-five feet in height. The board of adjustment may permit structures in excess of thirty-five feet and as a conditional use, provided that the structure meets the standards in section four point four, which is the conditional use approval. Additional use, uh, the structure does not constitute a hazard, so these are the findings that the board needs to make. The structure does not constitute a hazard or nuisance or the portion that structure above thirty-five feet shall remain unoccupied except for normal maintenance. So, um, in my conversation, in my limited opinion, um, is that there is a possibility that you can get conditional use approval. But it, it depends on you meeting those particular requirements. Uh, and the one that's, that, that sort of sticks out as being a potential problem is unoccupied.
It is unoccupied, um.
Well, and so, uh, and unfortunately, the term unoccupied is not the term defined in the zoning bylaw. And so what does it mean? Well, since it's not defined, it's up to the ZBA to decide what it might mean. And this is a matter, I assume, of first impression as to what unoccupied may mean. It runs the, so, uh, what structures are over thirty-five feet that are unoccupied? I can think of, uh, a couple's, a couple structures that are routinely over thirty-five feet in height that are not occupied at all. So you have a silo with a farm. Uh, that may be a bad example because farm structures are exempt from zoning. But, uh, uh, wind towers over thirty-five feet, cell towers over thirty-five feet. So those things, there's nobody occupying it, and only somebody goes up and down the, the tower for purposes of maintenance. Um, another example of something that may be occupied is that you have, uh, uh, a lighthouse, aren't any lighthouses in Bakersfield because we don't have, we, the ocean.
We all have, yeah.
There's not that much ocean right here. Um, but the, the, but the, the, what's occupied is the top of the tower of the, of a lighthouse, and that person's more than thirty-five feet, and then they're sitting up there looking out. Maybe not anymore, maybe they got some sort of camera up there and they're just scanning the area. Uh, but you would see that, and I, that the, uh, the lighthouse is occupied from time to time. But the top layer is not occupied as a residence or a habitation. And so that's something that this board will need to, to consider whether or not under, uh, whether it's, uh, can, under conditional use approval, can that particular use of the tower that you built be used from time to time as a children's playroom or, uh, a lookout to, to spot deer or whatever. Um, certainly it cannot be used for a bedroom type thing. So that would be clearly occupied, in my opinion. My opinion doesn't count, by the way. I could, you know, I can give you an opinion, but that's all it is.
The portion of our home that exceeds thirty-five feet serves, uh, dead attic space, this trust is in silos essentially.
What's it used for? Or what will it be used for?
Lights to access the area. Um, that's it, it's entirely closed off.
Okay, so it's used for lights to?
Oh, lighting, natural light, there's windows, um, so natural light.
Okay, so just bring it to the house. Is it some sort of renewable energy resource?
It is a design, um, uh, consideration, it's, um.
I will mention that if, if there are, um, and I didn't copy this, but there are other types of, um, other type of, um, conditional use is that, um, if you have energy resource type structures, such as you have a solar panel on top of the roof and it goes over the thirty-five feet. Uh, state law says that that is a, uh, eligible for conditional misapproval. So if you're able to style your tower as a renewable energy resource, um, you may have something there.
Um, I did provide some information in my initial application, the letter on, um, portion. But, um, I have to elaborate on it, uh, because initially I thought we were applying for variance, um.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah. Um, I, I have included it as in addition to, um, but I guess what, what is the directive forward at this point, since this is just a variance meeting? Um, and I, I did provide an application for conditional use tonight, obviously it needs to be warned and everything too, but.
If, if you want the hearing on the variance, you know, the decision, they closed the hearing on the variance this evening, the board will, can close the hearing and can, um, make a decision, you have an answer within the forty-five days.
Um, is there any chance that we can agree upon something through the variance application, um, that would still work for everybody? Uh, or are we?
You have to do conditional use at this point, yeah.
I, I will, I will give you a personal opinion again. My personal opinion is mine and mine only, it's not evidence, it's not something that's binding on the board. But my personal opinion is you should have a very, very difficult time getting a variance.
Can you say mine?
Sure, um. Are the um, I think that the the beginning part would be is what is the tower for? Is it something that re- is required to give you reasonable use of your property? And I would say that there probably are ninety nine percent of the houses in Bakersfield, if not more. Don't have a tower that's needed to bring you light from the uh from the sun into the property. Uh and so it it's it's a use. It's. Not reasonably required in order to give you reasonable use of your property. You then if you're looking at what the typical grounds for the variance would be. So you'd say you look at the first criteria talks about unusual uh problems particular to the property such as. Uh slope. Uh minimum width. Uh and so that you need some sort of uh variance so that you can build a house on something that's flat. Uh near the boundary line. Uh that would be grounds for variance, but it's very difficult to get. The to show that there's unusual circumstances, whether you have a parcel of land containing about ten acres. The second criteria, there's no. Property could be built in strict conformity. Well, the property can be developed as a single family residence without a tower. Which would be in conformity with the. With the regulations. Uh unnecessary hardship. Uh that's something that's not caused by you. We understand that the person who sold you the trusses. Uh made a mistake and made them too big. That said, is that you have the authority to say, I don't want those trusses. And take them back. Okay, so you're you, so the trusses are now gone and it's and they may be and they probably won't be coming back. If the variance isn't granted, I guess. But again, that's something that if you were to have accepted those trusses and said, now we got to build. Um uh tower a hundred feet high. And I that I exaggerate, but.
Just a process of the build, um but I think that's beside the point, um.
I think we're done with our request for variance, sir.
That's that's up to you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. I'm I'm confused as to why we went all the way through that meeting. With a variance application with no directive as to say, hey, we should do a conditional use approval first.
We can't. We can't.
I I'm supposed to say I hate to to say that.
You can't educate us on how the process works.
I think there should be somebody who is able to educate you. When that and it and it and typically. That if you have a full-time zoning administrator who's been doing this for a while. The zoning administrator's job is really to help you out. Uh and I'm sure that Brian tried to help you out, but he's new to this job, uh something he's been doing that for. Six months, six months or so, and how many applications come in within six months. Uh and so it's a learning process. I do this for a living. I, you know, I happen to be on the planning commission of the city of St. Albans. I've been on the. Zoning Board of Adjustment for the city of St. Albans. I represent people. And I represent municipalities in in the uh with zoning applications. And so this is something that's sort of old hat to me. It's not old hat to you. It's not old hat to Brian and it's not old hat to the zor- zoning board of adjustment. They're, they come in and sort of learn as they go. Uh and so that's the reason I'm here tonight and part is to help them now. But also hopefully in the future that if when they come up with other uh problems such as this. That they have a better understanding of what they should be doing or whom they should call if they don't understand what they should be doing.
Because we got the application from you guys and that's why I said we don't know what's going on. We're gonna get. And that's when I talked to Michael was not long after that. And then I couldn't communicate anything further. So I had to. Just go with what we're doing tonight to to.
We had communications prior to sending email to Michael too. So I mean, who do we reach out to if we do have questions so that it is public or so that it is addressed as the board?
Again, you can talk with the zoning administrator and the zoning administrator can give you. His or her understanding of where you are and zoning administration. I think would like to be helpful that that's his his job or her job is to um. Process permits and it's not to and to help you get through the process itself. But again, um if you if 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 the zoning administrator doesn't have that amount of expertise. Then you should probably contact your own attorney to say, wh- where are we? What can we do? And.
This should be able to be solved without attorneys.
No question about it. No question.
Um I'm not gonna, I don't want to point finger at Brian because yeah, it's only been six months and you haven't seen any of these in the town of Bakersfield. But um we weren't properly warned of the meeting last time. Um so uh. That's that's kind of a sticking point I have with all of this. This um process has been a mess from the get-go. So I um I just want to make sure, we have three little kids under five at home. Like the coordination to do this meeting is incredibly frustrating. So I don't want to keep doing this. I want to solve this. I want to move on for for this build. I'm trying to do the right thing.
So it's now that you filed the application for conditional use approval. The board can warn that uh for a meeting. Uh and then I think that the questions, you know, I think that the I outlined what I consider to be the primary issue. Of giving you conditional use approval is whether or not what is. Unoccupiable may mean and.
At what point would you go off of a state that defines?
I don't know what the word names.
State doesn't have one of those.
This sort of the the state does not have a definition of unoccupied. Uh but you would still remain unoccupied except for normal maintenance. And so the 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 tower have a separate floor? Or is it just a a a? Light coming down.
Currently it's closed off um. Because uh we don't want any access to it at this point. Uh we're trying to figure out a way to continue letting light through. So it's closed off. We can't get to it um from, I think it's about sixteen feet from the top down that there's no access. So um it is entirely unoccupied at this point.
Okay, so I mean, uh if the tower is, if if the tower, is the tower constructed yet or?
Yeah.
Constructed, it's all constructed. The trusses that you're um. Confused on um is we've bought trusses, we've sent back trusses, we've bought more trusses, we've sent back trusses. We've bought more trusses. Our builders built separate trusses. Um we've.
So something's built at the moment.
It's 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 built. Um and so we're just trying to appease everything here um because we can't go back. With our feelings that we've already had.
Can I ask you why you didn't apply for this when you knew? At the first, no, it was built December thirty first, by or October thirty first. I drive by your place every other week. It was, there was a roof on it, a tower and a roof on it before you applied. For that, so that's why I'm asking, why didn't you do it before then?
We were still in back and forth. Um by the time it got up is when I sent my application. What when it was fully completed is when I sent the application I wanted.
That's what I'm saying is like, why don't you do it when you first realized like, oh my gosh. After it was built?
Yes, because um we didn't have. We didn't have a height of our pack. Um the trust company did not set us an elevation drawing of this. I requested it in my emails. I got nothing. We got a puzzle piece of trusses to put together on the site. Um and so that's what we had to figure out.
And your builder would testify to that, that he didn't realize it was going to be forty five feet.
For the bank. So we're, he was hired as a subcontractor to put our puzzle together.
There wasn't really a way to be honest to know the final, that we pieced together what the hell was sent us.
No, I get it. It's just my husband built houses for years. Um and so when I'm thinking. I would have probably noticed, you know, when the trusted size come in, I would have figured it out on and go, oh shit, this is gonna be. Forty five feet and then stop, let's.
They didn't stop. Um I have to, you know. I I I did everything in my tower, lower trusses and lower trusses to keep it all down below.
Through any of the wrong of the tower dresses. I told them not to.
We don't stop, they did a movie.
It's a period of time.
Okay.
And by then after the time it had, the time had elapsed since I came in. Uh we only had our subcontracting for X amount of time, right?
Make sure you're talking into the mic.
We only had our, the green license on second.
Yes.
We had our frame for a small period of time, right? Um and then. We had told the trust company not to build the trusses. We we told them multiple times to go stop to it and then they.
Builder called them, told them to stop. We need to figure out dimensions, everything.
Time had elapsed and then they sent them and that because of that time lapse, we're gonna lose out on our builder. Weather's coming in.
We have a timeline on our.
Timeline on our bank low. Uh we have three young kids and we. Just had to piece together when it came to see what the.
My understanding of the of the height restriction um also was that. Thirty five feet um was not from the lowest point. It was from ac- for access um consideration, I guess, so.
That's that's another issue that the board needs to decide is how to measure. The thirty five feet and so that uh if you have something that's built on a hill. You have the low side, you have the high side and um. And where do you measure from? Well, it would having not been stated by the planning commission in the bylaw. This board needs to make a decision how it should be measured. And I would say that typically um. A municipality will do an average of the high and the low and will use the average. Uh my understanding is that is that you're even on the low side, you're one point five feet too high and I'm.
Present grade, so our our grade's gonna come up about two feet. Um so the backside doesn't actually um. Matter, it's the front side.
Okay. So because we're not at the final grade.
Let me ask, let me just ask a question that's immaterial for a variance hearing. Chatting this evening. But um on the backside, what's the uh so the backside's the. Gives you, gives you less. Height, if you will. How accessible is the backside to say fire equipment? So that something happened, you had a fire, it's coming out of the the tower. The fire uh fire department arrives on site and they say. We can't get uh, we we can't put a truck on the backyard to.
We drove a crane truck up and around.
We've we've made the ask, half the reason our foundation didn't come up as high as we wanted it to is because of access around the site. It would have been too steep around the front side to bring the concrete up there um to fill in that way. But we made sure there's access all around the site.
Uh that may be something, it may be something important from the board's, the Z B A's viewpoint on conditional use approval. Just to make sure that.
The backside.
How to measure the height.
Yeah, the backside is forty four and a half feet from the ground to the top, right?
It's the front that's.
The backside is the one that's now less than thirty five.
Okay. Yeah.
So if you take thirty five and forty five essentially, you're at forty feet. Scrape off here or there, you're at thirty nine and a half feet. So you're four and a half feet over on an average.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, if you decide to measure from the the lowest, the least about to measure height. As opposed to the average or the highest about. That may make a difference. That may be something that the that the. Fire department, you have some sort of opinion on at the hearing on conditional use approval. They may have an opinion on it now, but again, it's not a binding opinion because we can't consider conditional use approval.
There are other buildings in the town that would exceed that from the lowest point.
That are.
Church steeples.
Yeah.
Yeah, they they may predate zoning.
Yeah.
They predate zoning.
Fire issue, if if this is still a fire issue, I think we can satisfy the concerns um. Even better than the the uh non-conforming existing structures would have.
Some of the, I actually did find out that the ones that were above that size, that they actually put a sprinkler system in. So they actually did have sprinkler systems.
That's a possibility of the condition that might be imposed.
But never since that we've had zoning specifying the height has anybody passed. People have asked and been denied. And so that's why we're careful because you're sitting here now saying, what about these other people that are already existing? And then now we're pre, now we have to turn around and say, well, wait a second, there's really none. But if we let you, then that next person's gonna come in here and say just what you said right now. You have to meet all five conditions, yeah.
Is a very step to meet all five criteria. As a conditional use, they don't have to meet any of the five criteria. But they do need to meet whatever conditions may be imposed.
Right, so I have a question, I think, for you, if I may. Um. The unoccupable space, and I actually, that's my word, because we said unoccupied. Unoccupable to me is different. So that space you have right now, you, your intent is to keep it. Closed off, cap, no, nobody can use it. My concern would be thirty is down the road, you sell that house and somebody says, look at that great space.
Yeah.
Let's put upstairs. Then we have an idea. And yeah, I know that came up last time as a event. We can't use those conditions.
Well, the if if they. If they get conditional use approval. Or variance and well, the variance may say. No, I don't want to use the variance, but if they get conditional use approval, that it needs, that it cannot ever be used as occupable space. That condition runs with the land.
We could put that in.
It runs with the land.
Okay.
Is it occupable, sir, because the bylaws made.
It it says unoccupied.
That was my will. And I said that was my word on unoccupable. That was my sort of frame on it is it's unoccupied, but that doesn't mean to say that it couldn't be. Once you went there. That's just where my brain was.
I I agree with you.
Now, Michael, under conditional use, let's get away from the variance because I think what we try to do is mix the two together and that's right where it got kludgy, right? And even in your request, you 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 actually state that you are requesting. Conditional, you you're requesting a bylaw, subdivision bylaw for conditional use and approval for structure height above. You you put in variance in one sentence and then in the next section you talk conditional use, so it kind of gets kludgy.
But it didn't address conditional use of all in the in the letter. Addressed the five, five criteria under.
It says, you're introducing yourself. Hello, myself and my husband are applying for a variance from the town, from Bakersfield zoning and subdivision by law for conditional use approval. So it it's so, but that wasn't what I was pointing on. I apologize. It was just saying I got kludgy because we're trying to do two. Michael, uh the question is, it when if when we hear conditional use, if they come back and they've already applied for it. Uh one of the things we tried to do in some of the conditions was to put in clauses that. They and other, you know, they and anyone they sell their home to will hold the town harmless as well as the town of Bakersfield Fire Department. If anything happens due to that structure being over thirty five feet. Is that something we can put in there as a condition or is that?
Let's put it this way, you can put in a condition. And it's up to the up to a court to decide, you know, so the place burns down. Because uh because the the tower caught fire and fire department couldn't put the fire out because it was too tall. Okay. Um and. Planting and family dies or uh. Anybody institute suit for anything, right? And it's up to the court to decide whether or not that condition is enforceable or not enforceable. My tendency is to say that it's probably not enforceable. But on the other hand, I'd also have a tendency to say if I were a judge, that you you built the structure, you bought the structure. You knew that there were problems, you know, when you looked at this thing saying, you know, that we considered, you put in the in your findings that you considered. You knew that there were problems, you know, when you looked at this thing saying, you know, that we consider, when you put in the, in your findings that you consider this. It, it, it has, um. Fire protection problems associated with it. Uh, and, uh, we're not gonna require that you put in fire doors or that you. Uh, let's say that this is just a pure tower where the light's coming down and the heat's going out in the summer. Uh. Uh, what do they call that? Michigan cooling or Indiana cooling or something like that? That, um. That the person who's. You know, if it's in the, if it's in the decision that we're concerned about fire and you're, and, and, you know, we, we think you're assuming your own risk. And so somebody who's looking at the building permit and the decisions and things like this may say, gosh, um. I don't have a good case against the town of Bakersfield for, uh, giving us a building permit for a tower. We did it our, you know. We did it at our own risk, uh, at the town's risk.
Thank you. Yeah, it could, without, you know, putting anyone into the, into the death zone. Uh, that is mainly my concern. Someone goes up there, fire happens and unfortunately, no one can get to them and.
Who's liable?
The house, right? I mean, it could be anybody. I, it could be a firefighter trying to save someone. I have no idea. But, you know, that, that's my concern with, with. With that, and the one clause that we were trying to put in that says, hey, you know, like you said, you're assuming your own risk by going up there kind of thing. Even just to put the Christmas decorations up there kind of thing. You know, um, that was why I was asking the question.
You may say that there's no electricity up there in the tower.
Right.
You know, so that's eliminate that risk. You may say that at least it'll be sprinkled. You may say a variety of different things, but. That's a different, you know, that's for you folks to decide.
What town?
As immediate, give you any really advice on.
What was one of the, one of the towns said, if you buy the fire truck, then it's conditional use.
My suspicion is if you took that to court, we're not gonna do a court.
So, so.
And I also, I would joke about this, point out that there's six driveways from here to my house that. Aren't near, aren't remotely accessible by a fire truck. So it doesn't matter if there's thirty-five sprinklers in there, fire doors, anything.
I, I do understand that, uh, whether, whether there should be. Uh, whether you could put into your bylaws that all properties need to meet. Uh, all sick residential properties need to be, uh, have to have a fifty-foot driveway leading up to them so that they can accommodate.
Mm-hmm.
Fire trucks coming and going. You could, you can do that. Uh, but whether you should do it is a different issue, uh, and, and so that, you know, hunting camp is typically. Not accessible for fire equipment. You know, they're walking in and.
Matt, are you familiar with any of driveways? Yeah, swear buddy. Now, I already did this meeting once.
Why don't we make a motion to close the variance here at the request of Taylor and Morgan Flanagan?
And I think that the, they essentially withdrew their application for variance.
That's correct.
Okay, so withdrawing it. The only decision you'll get would be something from the board saying the decision has, the variance request has been withdrawn. And then they'll go into the client's file or the zoning file saying variance request has been withdrawn. For sermon to, uh, oral representation at the hearing on January sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
So I go back to the motion to close the variance here.
I'll second.
We have a, a motion made and second it and I'll do it this way since all those have favored.
Yep, I'm taking notes for myself. I.
Okay, so it's closed. Now, since we're out of the meeting here.
What was your, what was your question again?
Um, are you familiar with the properties he's talking about? What, are there driveways that aren't accessible?
Um.
Okay.
All of the houses, buildings, camps, things of that nature. There is some certain rules in this town and it has been addressed for. Been four, five, three, four years working on it now.
Okay.
I think there is gonna be some proposed bylaws.
Yep. Um. We're doing those this year.
It's not just fire. Fire, fire falls off, falls into the inventory as well. So you need to get the ambulance in there.
Right.
Time and time again. Uh, we have made some pretty good progress on. I would say himself.
There are.
Here, up in there.
I, I was gonna say, there are communities that do have driveway standards.
Yeah, I think that's.
And, um.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, so did you, you know, dot A, A seventy-six and B seventy-one standards or whatever, and then think the B seventy-one's of the, the intersections and A seventy-six may be the. Uh, roads themselves. Typically they don't apply A seventy-six for a single driveway, but if you have, uh, three. Two or more than three, um, I'm talking about what's typical. If there's more than three driveways, then they, they say you need to go to the A seventy-six standards.
So if I could, before we continue, we, we've closed the hearing. I'm going to stop recording because hearing's done, right?
Yeah.
So let's just get that taken care of first. Tammy no longer needs to take notes because the hearing's over.
We do have another meeting that starts at seven.